Morning, we'll go into drainage trustees. We need to approve the drainage claims.
I think we were, we approved this last week, didn't we?
This is the new one for this week. It was presented to you last week as an invoice.
And we approved it.
Yeah. So this is just actually cutting the check for Hennecker's Construction for the amount of eighty-three thousand nine hundred and twelve dollars and fifty cents.
Some of, did we pay the claim?
Second.
All in favor?
Seems redundant to me, extremely redundant. I mean, we approved it last week to ban. I assume that it just, and we signed it with the claims that came around, so, but whatever. Alright.
All in favor? All eyes. Approved minutes from last meeting.
Okay, so the minutes of January twenty 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 five, Wright County Board of Supervisors met in regular session of trustees of the drainage districts with the following members present. Rick Rasmussen, Dean Cluse, Lynn Luke, Ashley Bosch, and Betty Ellis. Also present were Deb Luke's Deputy Auditor. Motion by Rasmussen, seconded by Cluse to call the meeting to order motion carry. Rasmussen presented the following drainage invoice for Hennecker's Construction for DD thirty-six lateral C for the amount of the eighty-three dollar, or eighty-three thousand nine hundred and twelve dollars and fifty cents. Drainage claims for payment were approved to the previous meeting on January thirteenth twenty twenty-five were read and approved. There were no work orders needing approval, most of my clues and second from the meeting motion carry.
Motion approved as presented.
Thank you. Review and act on drainage work orders.
We have one new work order. This was filed by John Goman. This is for Drainage District Thirty in Section Twenty-nine of Pleasant Township. He came in and reported a tile repair and some dirt needing filled in for a twenty-four inch tile. Lynn did go out and take a look at that location and he provided some pictures of that as well.
I think that that's approximately, how far would you say it was from the repair we did?
About thirty feet.
About thirty feet, so it would be nice if they, I don't think Mazda has a camera, but it would be nice to take a peek down that thing and see just what's going on.
I can check that, but I don't believe they do either.
Okay, alright.
Hey, nothing else for the drainage?
No.
Okay, now, in being as Board of Supervisors, need approval of tentative agenda?
The treasurer came down earlier and asked that item nine be moved to next week. So I would make most to approve the agenda presented with the, with tabling item nine.
Go second on that?
Oh, sorry.
All in favor?
Alright.
All eyes? Yeah, would you read the minutes of the last meeting?
In twenty twenty-five, the Board of Supervisors met as Drainage District Trustees. Motion by Ellis, seconded by Cluse to approve the invoice submitted by Hennecker Construction for DD thirty-six lateral C in the amount of eighty-three thousand nine hundred and twelve dollars fifty cents. Motion carries. Motion by Cluse, seconded by Bosch to approve the drainage minutes of the previous meeting of January thirteenth twenty twenty-five. Motion carries. Motion by Cluse, seconded by Bosch to adjourn as Drainage District Trustees. Motion carries. Chairman Rasmussen called the regular meeting of the Wright County Board of Supervisors to order at nine sixteen AM. Members present were Rasmussen, Cluse, Bosch, Luke's, and Ellis. Motion by Ellis and seconded by Cluse to approve the tentative agenda. Motion carries. Minutes of the previous regular meeting of January thirteenth twenty twenty-five were read and approved. Approved claims for payment. Wayne Asby with the Wright County Charitable Foundation gave an update and presented the board with a list of thirty-nine different funds that the foundation gives grants from. Asby then requested that the board considers the Wright County Charitable Foundation. Motion by Cluse, seconded by Luke's to receive the recorder's quarterly revenue report. Motion carries. Motion by Cluse, seconded by Bosch to appoint Kent Kirstine as Grant Township Trustee to fulfill the remaining two years of Gary Martin's four-year term. Motion carries. Motion by Cluse and seconded by Luke's to authorize Amanda Meyer Auditor and Joan Schillinglaw, County's Payable Clerk, to manage and make changes to the county Visa credit cards. Motion carries. Adam Clements, Wright County Engineer, reviewed a bridge replacement project on Taylor Avenue over Ludix Creek in Section Thirty-one of Pleasant Township, explaining that they will be replacing a twenty-four foot by fifty-seven foot triple-span timber bridge with a twenty-four foot by eighty foot triple-span continuous concrete slab bridge. The letting goes project will take place on April fifteenth twenty twenty-five. Motion by Cluse and seconded by Bosch to approve the final plans for project BROS dash C zero nine nine parentheses one zero six dash dash eight J dash nine nine. Motion carries. Clements then explained a memorandum for installation of a private drain tile in County Road Right-of-Way located in the northeast quarter of Section Ten, Boone Township. The landowner, J. Paulie, would like to install a private drain tile within the road right-of-way at a depth of about ten feet. Motion by Cluse, seconded by Bosch to approve the memorandum to install a private drain tile on Hundred and Tenth Street between Emmett Avenue and Davis Avenue and sign a contract with the landowners. Motion carries. Clements then gave an update on Secondary Roads Department. Motion by Cluse, seconded by Bosch to adjourn the meeting. Motion carries.
Any corrections? If not, they stand approved as read.
Only thing I have is that we have drainage minutes up the top and we've been just saying the Board of Supervisors met as Drainage District Trustees to see the full set of minutes go to the county website.
Because Courtney was not here last week, so I did not know she was going to do minutes.
Okay.
That's why I put them in here. I didn't know she, until she started reading them, I didn't know she was doing this.
Let's add, this statement that's, that we typically do, yeah. Just to keep it consistent, yeah.
Let me know when you got it done, I'll re-sign it.
So that was a motion to approve as corrected?
That is correct.
Oh, second.
All in favor?
Alright.
All eyes? Claims have been around. Open forum for public input.
Good morning, um, my name is Julie Glade. I am a landowner in Wright County affected by the Summit CO2 Project. We're now moving into year four. Since this project has been first announced by Summit, since then, ten counties in Iowa have passed ordinances with setbacks to protect their towns, schools, nursing homes, and rural residents from these dangerous and very possibly deadly CO2 pipelines. Recently, the Worth County Board of Supervisors have directed their P and Z to draw up zoning ordinances for hazardous liquid CO2 pipelines. Since we have new members of the Board of Supervisors in Wright County, I believe I speak for other affected landowners that it's time to once again ask the board to move forward with protective ordinances. We've been told in the past that the Board of Supervisors can't move ahead without zoning ordinances from the P and Z. But who's going to direct the P and Z to draw them up? Planning and Zoning Commission is typically directed to draw up ordinances by the City Council or other local governing bodies, such as the Board of Directors, who are elected officials accountable to the people who elected them. The public, the public can't direct them to go ahead at their meetings and draw up these ordinances. We don't have the power to do that. I believe it's time to stop passing the buck. There are, there are more miles of pipeline in Wright County than any other county, which increases the chance of a rupture here in Wright County. There, if this thing goes through, there will be a rupture in Wright County. People are gonna suffer, people are gonna possibly die. And there's really, it's time to address this again, I believe. And I, I think the, um, the land, affected landowners of Wright County that have been coming to these meetings over and over again deserve at least to know, if the Board of the Members, Court of Supervisors maybe need to go on the record as being for or against passing ordinances. So we, so we know where we're, where we're stand. I just encourage you again to pass ordinances to protect, um, as affected landowners. Thank you.
Julie, I, I think that you probably, if you look back in the record, you'll find that the supervisors have taken a stand on their position.
So you are all, all five of you now are opposed or will not move ahead?
I'm not speaking about the due board, I'm speaking of the past board and the decisions that were made at that time.
So maybe you could repeat those to, for us, I guess?
Would you disagree with that statement?
No. They're standing on there in zoning.
Tell me your, tell me your statement again. I guess I'm trying to.
I said, I think that it's clear from the record where we stand in our favor, in whether we are opposed to the pipeline or whether we are for the pipeline. I think that was, has been made very clear.
I totally agree with that, but I'm asking you to go a step further and pass protective ordinances like almost a dozen other counties have. Counties that don't have as many miles of pipeline as we do.
I think Jeremy Abis does have an ordinance that is written and they were having it on hold right now, being tabled because many of those counties were getting sued. I don't know if that's a continuum. I don't know. I haven't read whether those counties are being sued yet or not. Have you?
The latest ones that have passed ordinances have not been sued.
Yeah, so in, in my discussion with Tim Whipple, I think a week or two ago, there's a lot of counties that are doing the right-of-way ordinance that we enacted.
Yeah.
They're essentially copying it, copying it verbatim. I didn't really talk to them a lot about the zoning ordinances. But there's, I think there's a lot in District Court that are, have done it and they're just seeing what the, the outcome is going to be. My understanding is, I mean, you guys could call Jeremy right now, but it's my understanding from the zoning board that they, I don't know if they were not so much interested about it, but kind of just like you said, put it on hold. It is there. I don't know if it is, you can make the directive to tell them. I mean, you can make the directive all day long and it went to the zoning board, but it is a board. They have, they have their own vote.
They have their own vote.
To enact it or not, it would be their recommendation to you to make an ordinance and then you could do it. So, I mean, that may be a discussion for their board. I don't know if it's a joint meeting, if you want to do that with them and, or have a couple of representatives from the Board of Supervisors go to a planning and zoning meeting and, and get their, get their ideas.
Yeah, I've done that in the past.
Isn't the board, isn't the board bound to do what you direct them to do? Whether or not they believe that they should be passed or not. It's, they're not the ones that decide whether they get passed or not. You do. You five Board of Supervisors are the ones that decide. It's not them. And don't they need to follow through with what you direct them to do, whether or not they're for or against it?
So then why have a planning and zoning board?
Good question. They're not, they're not elected. They're not accountable to the people. You guys are. And we don't, we don't have the power to do it. The public doesn't have the power. We could go and talk till we're blue in the face and we did. And they refused to meet. They won't speak with us again. So I, I truly believe that you have the power to move ahead if you wanted. And if they didn't want to draw them up, you could do your own. Why?
I guess the reason that, that we haven't moved forward at this point is that it is currently in litigation with other counties. And, and the Iowa Utility Board has already made a decision and that decision is contingent upon certain things. And so, if you just want to do this to go on the record, is that my understanding?
Absolutely. I don't, there is, um, a senate filed, a, a bill put forth by this year's senate just last week, SF one thirty-six. And in that bill, it allows counties to be able to establish setbacks in ordinances. So we're working at it on the state level right now. And I think it's time to move ahead. It's, it's, you owe the landowners, I guess, to know whether or not you're gonna move ahead or not with these, with, with protective ordinances. We've got new members. I think that maybe if they want more information, we definitely can provide that to them. But I'm seeing other counties moving ahead with ordinances. It's not too late to do that. And what if we, what if we don't move ahead with ordinances and wish we did? We're waiting on Shelby County's litigation. And that's probably not going to be coming down until, for several more months. So we, I'm sure we will be sued, but right now I don't think anything else is going to, to litigation in any courts. We're just waiting for Shelby County's case.
The new Fimsa law proposed changes, but those changes, right, the Fimsa law, which I don't know if that's been held up now or not, because I think Trump did something about new regulations. But it mentions in there over and over again, two miles either side of the pipeline. And it seems, it seems to me like an ordinance. And that law, depending on when it goes effect and stuff, if, if the Fimsa law comes out before Summit starts, that will apply to Summit. And Summit isn't gonna start until South Dakota lets it.
Hopefully, South Dakota doesn't let her.
Well, but, but I understand what you're saying. So.
We can't rely on other things to stop this pipeline when we have a chance to do it. We can locally. I know we, we really hope, I, I mean, we had said before, this is, what's right is right. Well, turned out that, that our, um, Utility Board granted the eminent domain. We didn't think that should happen because that's not right, but they did. I think we just need to have as many guardrails in place as possible. And FEMSA, FEMSA does not have anything to say about locating the pipeline. They have said several times, or they've said in their last report that the, the power to place pipelines relies in the states and in the counties locally.
Julie, I have a, a text message and I'll, I'll try to communicate with Jeremy this afternoon to, to see what the status and what the thinking of the board was, and then I will give you a call back. Okay?
Okay, that'd be great, Betty. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have one question about this, though? If we were to pass an ordinance without the P and Z's, recommendation, or that, is that overstepping?
I don't know. I'd have to look at, look in code and see what, what it says about that. They, they are an appointed board. They're not elected. But there are other appointed boards that are, give me the word that we used down there at school. They're
Autonomous.
Yeah, independent or autonomous boards that have decision-making authority. So I don't know the answer to that.
And I don't know, you know, you have Tim Whipple, he's our attorney on this, that's helping us get through many of the, the drainage ordinance, the right-of-way ordinance. And I believe that the, the last I remember, the planning and zoning ordinance with the setbacks has been written and it's just sitting on the desk, waiting to see what these other court things are, are happening, but I can't swear by that. I need to, I need to confirm that with Jeremy.
That is, I would say that's an accurate description, yes.
So I don't know if Tim Whipple can give you advice on that, that portion of Iowa code and give direction, or if we need to talk to the county attorney on?
He had given us a direction and, and that's what we had gone by.
Okay.
So.
Thank you.
Well, I think Tim Whipple, Tim Whipple, I'm sure will probably tell you, you're gonna be sued. And all these other counties have been sued, but that's why we have insurance. And that's why we need to stand up to these bullies. They're sue, they sue everyone. That's their way to, to silence everyone and to get us to back down. And I, I guess we're just gonna keep showing up until we get either a yes or no from, from the Board of Supervisors. Cause I know you're for us and I'm just asking for this, for another step forward. Very important step in my eyes. And a lot of other people, a lot of affected landowners would, would like to see you move ahead with this.
Love it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Did you have a question?
Yeah. On the bills that you paid or it's in the paper, not against them, just more an explanation of what they're for, so to speak. There's one, two, three here. Free slaven, H and C repair, about ten thousand. I mean, I, what's, do you mind going with this?
Be, are H back? It could be.
Assuming heating or cooling, that he would have come in and worked on that.
Oh, okay, okay, right. See, Atkins license and maintenance, about seven thousand.
That's our election equipment that gets maintenance every year.
The what?
Election, election equipment, the scanners and the ADA compliant machines.
Okay. First system bank gift cards, nine thousand.
That was part of either our safety or our wellness, so, both, okay.
Okay, good. Let's see, okay. Forty-five thousand for Bauerville tires. They buy that in bulk or?
We buy motor grader tires. They're about fifteen hundred to two grand a piece.
Same thing with Bright Service, nine thousand.
Yeah.
Diversity Farm, C, forty-five thousand.
Seating of the Tice Farm.
The which farm?
The seating of the Tice Farm that we bought where they closed the drainage wells.
Okay.
The easement areas were seated down.
Thank you.
And on, on those, we only have this much space, you know, to do a description. It's, it's really difficult to get, you know, a, a good, long description on which each one of them is. But you're more than welcome to just call the auditor's office if you have a question on it, because that's why they're posted and that's why they're printed in the newspaper is so that citizens can see.
Sure.
And so just to call the auditor's office and, and ask a question if, if you're really concerned about them, or come here, we'll try to get you an answer.
Explanation of them, that's all.
Correct.
That was also a reimbursed cost from idols.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Adam?
Just an update today. Last week we were out doing sundry. Trucks had some weather event and also doing sundry. We did get some more brush cutting done last week. We had some skid steer work orders that we did primarily with our brush cutter, our chipper. It, like I said, had some weather on Wednesday that we went out and treated some roads about around the noon hour. It came in pretty quick and it was gone by one or two o'clock in the afternoon. So, wanted to give you an update on the construction project, Bridge Two Ten, the Boss Corey Bridge. The deck has already been removed, so about ten days to get the whole, whole bridge down. We're about halfway through. They still have the abutments to remove and the piers, which they're working on this week. They had to move their crane in probably to, to have their wrecking ball break it down. If you want to see picture updates, we are trying to post pictures on Facebook and with our drone and we're gonna document it that way. So it's been nice that people tend to kind of go towards that so you can see the whole project. Soon they'll be starting, their next step is to start on the east abutment where they'll start driving piles. So if you're interested in coming out and seeing that, let me know. We'll try to coordinate that. You can come on out and we'll have you stand a little bit further away so you won't get all diesel drenched. But you'll see on Jeremy and Marcus's coats, they have spots of diesel that they have to stand underneath and count how many blows it has and how, how, how far it sinks. So, but we can explain that to you if, if you want to come out. So hopefully it'd be nice if they had it by the end of the week since, cause it's supposed to be a good week.
A good week.
Yeah, yeah, I saw fifty on Thursday, so that's a good thing.
And there'll just be an east and a west abutment.
There'll be nothing in there. There is a pier. But it's not, we're right on the edge of the water.
Okay.
So hopefully they can get that in before the Chupi Shiner thing goes, and it sounds like they will, just because they've, they've started so early. So that'll be the next part is, is that once they're out of that area, they don't have to worry about the Chupi Shiner. We can get to the deck and, and go. So there was, obviously it got really cold la, last couple of weeks, so there was a couple of days where they didn't come in and work just because they, you know, diesel engines don't like to start up when it's full below, so.
I would like to come and see that.
Yeah, definitely. So I'll have Jeremy and Marcus reach out when they get to that point. And yeah, come out. It's, it's a, it's a neat sight to see because we actually have to have, there's calculation in it. So there's, we actually, if it's dropping a certain distance, we have what we call our, our curves. And then we figure out how many tons of bearing are based on the drop of that and how far it goes in a certain amount it blows.
So you pound all those and if it's still going, you weld another one to it?
Yep, yep. And then if we don't get bearing, we actually can stop and then go wait like twenty-four hours and then do so many hits on it and see how, if it moves. So we'll do what they call a retap.
How far down do they usually try to go?
Depending on where at, where, where, where at the county, they're anywhere from sixty to a hundred feet down.
Wow.
The pipeline's gonna get long, so. Yeah, and they're about fifty, forty to fifty foot, so that we, we will weld on. At certain point, they have to have a certified welder and then, and there's, we can't have a weld within, I think, ten feet of the end of one or something like that, too. So there's a little science to it and where they're going in, so, yeah, wanna come out, that'd be great.
Think it'd be, I have a supervisor school on.
Sure.
I'll double check with the guys and send you a text message just to make sure that it's, I don't think it's gonna be, if, if anything, it'll be at the end of the year.
Okay, perfect.
Because they're still having to tear out the abutments and the piers.
And what does the weather have to be like? What degree to pour the cement?
Um.
The concrete?
I have to check. I know paving is like thirty-two degrees and rising. So, but they can actually put something around it, put heat into it and be able to pour like an abutment or a pier, so.
Okay.
If they, if they get to that point, so.
Interesting.
Yeah.
Thank you, Adam.
Yeah, thank you.
Review and act on annual membership fee for medical examiners with the IACME, Iowa Association of County Medical Examiners, and that is for Tiffany Towler, I believe?
Um, we have never paid for their annual membership before. We've paid, we paid for their training, but we've never paid for their annual membership. I had Joan, our County's Payable, look up, see, what did we pay for the training? Because if they're members, they I had Joan, our county's payable, look up, see, what do we pay for the training, because if they're members, they actually get a discount price. So it would, if we start paying the annual fees, it would actually save fifty dollars on their training.
What, how much is it?
Hundred dollars.
How much?
Hundred dollars.
Um so we have, I don't know, well, we have the list of how many medical examiners that
Like five of them?
Or more.
And we have But the Webster County also covers
Uh Hamilton, Hamilton County, we cover some of Hamilton counties.
Hamilton County.
Um We have Andrea, uh McLaughlin is our deputy examiner, and then Tiffany Tolliver, Andrew Nelson, John Nissen, Katie Schlichting, Amy Erickson Keller. We have, you have five of, five of them, and then John Harrison, I don't know if he's still still alive, or is he retired?
Does, but he's going to be retired.
So if we, if we look at that, and I think Tiffany Tolliver is the only one that requests reimbursement or payment for some of those. Um and you, like you said, if they're members, then they get a fifty dollars, so really it's only a fifty dollar. Well, it's, so if non-members are like three seventy-five for the training, um members are like two twenty-five. So even with that hundred dollar annual fee, it would still be an overall savings of fifty dollars.
I see what you're saying, okay.
And is that per medical examiner, or that's?
That would be per medical examiner.
Per medical examiner.
They do that every year then?
Yeah. Yeah, and like I said, we've never paid them before.
No.
We have, and
But we do pay the train.
But we pay for the training, yeah. So it
Seems like a no-brainer.
If you, if you talk to other counties on medical examiners, very many, a lot of counties are really struggling to find a medical examiner or, or having somebody to do it, we are very fortunate, we've got John Aaron Sendet um has, has taken it on and, um in his recruiting, and um and then we've applied for a grant to help pay for some of the schooling when they go to that, um so yeah, I know that we haven't done some of this, and I've kind of been sticking my heels in the ground, but I'm thinking we have to start giving a little bit, just because um we, we want them, we don't wanna struggle and, and start having to call neighboring counties and having, it can get very expensive, so.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I will second that.
All in favor? All eyes? Do you need me to sign this or anything, just? Okay. Thank you. Old business?
Uh I had the Midas uh board meeting on Wednesday. Uh Shirley Helvole, who has been with Midas for thirty-five years, uh announced her retirement effective March twenty-first of twenty twenty-five, so uh the executive board of which Daryl Stephen Carlisle serves on will be um putting together a search committee to find somebody to take the helm there at Midas. Other than that, um I did uh ask about uh complication, because we are a member, we would get it, uh reduce price, um I think, I think that they were waiting until after July first, if I read my notes right.
Right.
Um they're gonna be setting fees, but it looks like it'd be around uh three thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars to have that sort of complication done of the ordinances.
She was saying that the most difficult part about complication is trying to get the ordinances.
Yeah.
All of our ordinances are online.
Right.
And I think I have them all in a Word document also.
Nice.
And so hopefully, if not all of them, a good majority of them. And so uh that, that will help in restructuring, that they do. Um we also have, I think, a document, and I'll have to check with the auditor's office on uh when Zimmer and Corey was working on it, they have a, a document that has been started.
Okay.
And um mainly needs to be reviewed also, so.
I had central Iowa detention, um basically what they want from us, could we do a sixty-day stay on any election of new officers? Back in two thousand eight, they made it a state law to report your twenty-eighty agreements with the state. If some of that hasn't been done, I did get back with Deb. And Deb, you wanna send all the ones we got out that we approved? Them uh twenty-eightys to Tony?
You give me the information, yes.
Yeah, I'll get that to you, and we'll get that, and another matter is place is doing good, but we're trying to get this twenty-eighty stuff straightened out.
So if you go onto the Secretary of State's website, there's a place for twenty-eightys, and I believe they should be all on there already, I think Wright County is current. Um the, the last one after we approved the uh, the amendment one, um I asked Amanda to send that to Tony, she didn't have it, so I went ahead and sent that to, the minutes to him uh stating that it has been passed, so um now I'm hoping that he will file with the S O Secretary of State, but I do believe ours are all current.
I can look it up, I've got my county secretary's office for, for the twenty-eightys.
Perfect, okay.
Okay, and then I've got uh I'm no tomorrow afternoon late.
And uh, uh Lynn, you had the Lyonville meeting?
Yeah, um I guess everything's going smoothly there.
Seems like it's the first meeting I've ever been to there, so.
So it seems like they are doing a good job of managing their money and
Have they had any more fires? I know that they had that new grinder, which I think is amazing, but they're struggling sometimes with little fires breaking out.
And their issue is lithium batteries being thrown away and creating fires. And yeah, that was, we had a discussion on that, you know, how do you stop that from happening?
Yeah. And there isn't a, a good way to cover it from that, he did bring up uh uh when they get the building complete, which uh that was a topic of dis- discussion, he was not real pleased with the progress of of um the completion on the building. But, but then he talked about uh the camera system and the fire, I think it's a fire sensing system.
Mm-hmm.
There, there was one that was in place, but it didn't report to him the fire until the following day, I believe.
Well, that could be a problem, yeah.
And weren't they there not too long before that fixing that one?
I'm not sure about that.
Um I know that my son in- installed a, a, a system, and I know Grant Keller did his entire machine shed, and um, and so as a backup, Grant's, and it's carbon monoxide and fire, and um Clay was driving home from Ames the other night, and the CO2 went off in, in Grant's um uh machine shed, and so then Clay was able to call Grant right away, and, and Grant said, yeah, I'm working out here, I had I'm running, but it, it worked, and so, you know, and it's not, it's relatively inexpensive, and it's not an annual fee.
Yeah.
Um so I might have Clay go out there and talk to them as just another backup, because it's, it's expensive to to have to put up a new building every time, or just burning the equipment, so.
They have fifty, fifty-two percent increase in their insurance rate because of, because of the number of incidents that they had.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
They were talking about the environment that they're in, that a lot of those sensors only work for a month or two, and then they're not any good.
Because it's that cold in that building, or?
I think it's maybe more dust or debris that's floating around in there.
Interesting.
And then on uh Thursday, we have Thursday, we have the statewide supervisors meeting down in the mall.
And I've uh, and I've been uh emailed Amanda on the budget for doing, making some updates. Um I did not get any, I was hoping for reports today, I didn't see anything, um so I will, I'll check with her um because I'd like to see where it's at now, where our levy rates are at, and um and whether more things need to be tweaked or, or looked at, so and when I hear from her, I'll send a, an email out to see.
I have a conference board today at six, at four thirty.
What, six?
No. I was gonna say sixteen thirty.
I had CICS and DCAT, and I am learning.
It's a lot.
Anything else before the board?
Most, most to adjourn.
All in favor?
All right.
All eyes?